Okay, here we go. Let me call this meeting together. It's November fourteenth. Thank you very much for coming to our council meeting. My watch is showing we have seven thirty eight P. M. Ms. Sarcisi, would you call the roll?
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
All right. What we're going to do now is I'm going to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And then I will ask Councilwoman Rita Darrow to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change and the courage to change the things we can and the wisdom to know the difference. Amen.
Okay.
The young man, the appointment, Mr. Schneider, the chief advocate, that would be number one fourteen?
Okay. Just his?
Just his.
Okay. All right. We don't have any minutes tonight, so what we're going to start with first is public comments. In order to speak at public comments, you need to sign up. And when you come up, come up to the microphone here at the front, state your name and address, and then please try and keep it to five minutes or less. The names on the list tonight start with Dan Havlicek.
My name is Dan Havlicek, as probably some of you know. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for his offer to try to resolve this issue without further problems. We really appreciate that, my wife and I, and we are certainly willing to try whatever we can to resolve the issue. The other thing I'd like to make mention, I really enjoyed something in the e-messenger, Mr. Mayor, that really hit home. To all the veteran, to all the military men and women that left the security of their family to protect the security of the American, all the American families, we thank you. We thank you for putting that in, Mr. Mayor, because that tells us that what we sacrificed for, we did it for the right causes. So again, I thank you for that, and I thank you for offering to try to resolve the issue, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Havlicek.
All right. Next on the list is Sylvia Hannigan. Sylvia?
Just a very short comment tonight. I want to thank my supporters and all the voters of Macedonia. As you know, I was elected to the new term of council starting January first, and I appreciate all the good word and all of the compliments and thank yous, and I just want to say that back at you, and I look forward to working with the mayor and the new council in the new term. Thanks.
Next is Fred Quigley. Fred?
I'm not going to relate to you this whole book. It's called "American Flag: Discrimination in the Bill of Terminus." I'm disappointed. It seems that Macedonia is more interested in developers and contractors than they are with the residents of the community. To give you an example of that, I'm not going to do this according to Hoyle. My neighbor just moved out yesterday. He was probably one of the first five neighbors that moved in. But he's got a sewer line that goes from the center of his house uphill into the main drain, which causes backflow, which causes a stink in his garage, which has made the house unbearable. Plus the fact the humidity level in the house has been tremendously high, plus the fact that they found that air ducts in the upper, in the attic, because he's on a slab, were missing. So a whole bunch of things. And he's got a thirty-seven-year-old invalid granddaughter who's totally bound to a wheelchair, who can barely see, who cannot talk, and the attitude of Chris Koblenz, the contractor for the development, the bill, puts him down, tells him he's an idiot, doesn't give him any help. The easiest thing for Chris to have done was to go in there, fix the drainpipe, and be done. The guy would still be living. But he moved out today because Chris won't do anything. Chris turned it over to Miglerini. Miglerini won't do anything. And while I won't say he won't do anything, they decided they were going to go ahead and do something. They wrote up a contract, and they took a lot of things out that Al wanted in the contract, but he says, "I just want out of here." And he went ahead and he says, "Okay." They got the contract, they decided, "No, this isn't good enough. We want more stuff taken out of it. We want to pay you less money for all the expenses that you've had trying to correct our mistake," and that is the contracting mistakes. And he just got fed up, and as I said, he moved out. Now, I'm disappointed because I go back in history and I look at the first time that I really had a conflict with Macedonia. Miglerini was the mayor. I used to be able to go in, sit down in his office, talk about issues, solve issues, and walk out, until there was tie-down bolts for my house. The washers and nuts on the tie-downs were all missing on my house up on the airline. I came to Miglerini, he told the building department, "Get it done." The building department got the contractor, the contractor got ten foot within my door, said, "I'm not going to do it." He walked away. Nothing was ever done again. No follow-up, no one did anything. So that was a disappointment. Then later, when you became mayor, I had a sinkhole problem because the contractor had buried his garbage in my front yard. I set up a meeting with the mayor. The mayor says, "Okay, we've got a meeting." Then later he calls me, he says, "I don't have time for you." So that wasn't a good way to step off either. The, this discrimination book is something that I've put together, and that's only part of it, because there's another manual that's half of that full. And I have decided since my neighbor got, I don't want to, well, since he got run over, I've sort of been fighting for him along with me. Right now, because I put up a flagpole, Miglerini will not approve any project that I submit to him. Every time, he comes up with a different excuse, contradicting his excuses. And, you know, first of all, he told me I wouldn't even put a deck up. Then I said, "Well, why, why do you charge twenty-five dollars a square foot?" He said, "Oh, I guess we allow decks." Then I put in a deck. He said, "No, you ought to put a patio." And he says, "But I did the deck that I want because my wife is handicapped, she needs to be able to get out the back door on a flat level with her cane," and that doesn't make any difference to him. The steps that I have are construction steps, which my daughter almost fell down on. I've gone to the fire department, the fire department says, you know, "That's not an issue of egress that they're concerned about." I'm an exempt fireman from New Jersey. I would have worried about it than New Jersey. But I'm stuck with those steps. I don't have a deck. I've put five applications in for a deck, all of which have been refused for one reason or another. I've taken rejections from him, brought him to the city, and the city said, "That's fine." He told the group that the city required an offset behind my house. The city says, "There's no such thing." So I can't trust his word for anything. And it goes on, and it goes on, and I, I, I probably should have just stuck to my script, but it's, it's getting very aggravated. And the thing is, I've got a list, a full-page list of things that I can do. Right now, it's in the Ohio Civil Rights Commission to investigate because of the facts of what's going to happen. They haven't done anything recently, and I told them that if Miglerini gets a hold of it, he controls Sommet County, he'll quaff it. They didn't believe me, but that seems to be what's happening right now. But that's okay. That's just the next step I'm going to take. The next step after that I'm prepared for, which goes to Columbus itself. And after Columbus, I've got preparation made for BBB, Angie's List, and anybody else that I can send out stuff, but the punch list, it's items that have never been fulfilled by the contractor, and for the attitude that they have expressed to me. They have turned the neighbors against me. One neighbor even walked past my house one night and called me an effin' jackass. For me, you know, that's totally uncalled for, but it shows the ignorance of that guy. Now, one of the problems was they said that you didn't read the rules and regulations. Well, the day I put up, I moved in on the twentieth of May. On the tenth, twelfth of June was Flag Day. I put up the American flag. Two days later, I got the letter from Miglerini, says he, "I'm violating the rules and regulations." And he called it a declaration. Well, the declaration offended me. But if it's a declaration, I can put it up three weeks ahead of time, and I can take it down three weeks afterwards. If I put all the Flag Day holidays on a calendar, the whole map is covered. And I'll leave you a copy to show exactly.
Fred, could I ask you, please, to summarize? Sum up, sum up.
I knew you'd say that. And I just figured, I need to say it here because I want people to know what my feelings are, because this is not the end. I have an agenda, and it will continue on until something happens where I get some satisfaction.
Call me up when you're going to put the flag up next time. I'll come over and help you.
I have a question for you.
It's never been from down.
I have a question for you, Fred.
Yeah.
Did you ever try and reschedule with me? Because I don't remember ever telling you I don't have time for you, as you accused me of.
Okay. Let me, let me clear it in perspective. I came to you without a time. I was ready to leave, but you said, "What's the issue about?" So I told you the issue. You went to the building department, they poo-pooed. I, the old building department, I had no use for it all. The new one, I've gotten a lot of cooperation on it. But, and then it came back to you, and the answer I got from you was, "I'm too busy. I don't have time."
At that instant, did you ever try and reschedule and come in? Because I have an open-door policy. There's people that are sitting in this audience, Fred, that come in and see me any time. So just remember that. If you'd like to come in, as long as I'm there, you're welcome in my office.
All right. I'll leave you all this stuff here, and you can all make copies of it, and everybody have a copy.
Thank you.
It gives a rough idea of where I am, but as you can see, those three or four pages isn't the whole issue, and it will go until I get satisfaction.
All right. Next on the agenda is Shirley Koch. Shirley?
Shirley Koch, nine oh two Eileen Drive. I just want to make a comment on the situation with Havlicek's barn and the property. I fully agree with the idea that we should not permit vacant lots to construct just a storage structure. Okay? And I'm in complete agreement with that. However, and this was discussed, but several things were discussed in the work session, and it's why I decided to say what I want to say. But anyway, he did have a house there. The barn was there. The house was torn down for whatever reason. It had to be demolished. And the barn is there, and it was legal at the time it was built. And it seems to me it should be grandfathered in as continuing to be legal as long as he maintains some sort of a, that the lot is maintained, that the area is maintained, and it is attractive. I mean, it would, to me, it wouldn't look any different from the road, and I know, I know where it is. Wouldn't look any different from the road to somebody passing it as to if maybe one of the houses on either side may own that, that property or something and have constructed a, or have an oversized lot or whatever. Nobody, I think, would, would know that. But I think that because it was legal to begin with, the house going down, and I don't know anything about being able to rebuild, there might be some problems with drainage or something there that may prohibit something else from going up. I don't know. But anyway, I think the barn should be grandfathered in, and if you do that, you're not opening up the door for somebody to just buy a vacant lot somewhere and put a structure on it because this was already built there legally, zoned legally, and everything. And so I think it falls under the category that we would call grandfathering.
You've got a good point, and by the way, bless you, Ken. By the way, our BZA meetings are open meetings?
When is the meeting going to be?
I don't know. All right. But you could find out. Usually they're scheduled with our meetings on the back.
And can, when people come in, can they talk at the BZA?
Oh, yes, but when you come in, you have to be sworn in. It's a little different than here.
Okay. But, because a lot of meetings, you know, you can't say anything. You can attend, and you can listen, but you can't have any input.
Yeah. You can, but you have to sign in and take an oath when you're speaking and speak, well, that way we, we have some control. All right? When you come in and state your idea, it'll be taken under consideration by the BZA. That's why I think it would be a good idea to go back there and legislation's here tonight to start that process.
Okay. And I think also that whatever we decide on this one, I happen to own some property, our business owns some property in Sagamore Hills. We happen to have a piece of property that is grandfathered into the zoning because of when it was built. We have a house and a small apartment building on what is now zoned as single-family only. And if either the apartments or the house burns down, we can't replace, for instance, if the house is burned down because there's another structure on there, we can't build the house back. If the apartment's built, burned down, we can't replace them because then the house would be the conforming structure. So I can see that if something like that happened to us, and there was some legislation you passed here or some ordinance, I can see that being a precedent that some other neighboring community might take into consideration. And nobody's saying anything about ours now because it is grandfathered in. Sagamore Hills recognizes that, doesn't give us any problem or anything like that.
Well, let me bring a point before you to consider. Usually, or not usually, always, before the city shows up on any property, before the city cites, before the city does anything, somebody complains.
Right.
So it isn't like the city rides around and say, "Aha, we got you." No. If nobody complains, fine. And that's probably the same situation with you and your neighbors, no matter where you're at. If you don't get a complaint, there's no problem. You can, people complain to us, we have to follow up. And sometimes, as we go through that follow-up, issues like this can come up, and we're going to try and address it as best we can.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to state the fact that I believe it belongs in a grandfathering status.
Well, you have that right. Absolutely. That's a good point.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Next, Micah Miller.
Michael Miller, Berkshire Drive, since May of nineteen eighty-six. I appreciate this forum and plan to use it often in the future. I'd like to thank all the citizens who voted for me in the Macedonia City Council election on November fifth. It's been an honor to work for you. I would also like to thank those who voted for other candidates because just the act of voting is so important. It transcends people, parties, politics, and campaigns. I will pray for those elected, that they will serve well and with wisdom and dedication. Much needs to be done. I expect to be a candidate in two thousand fifteen for the seat Nick Monar presently holds, and I will work toward that effort beginning at the end of my present term. I wish all a happy and healthy holiday season, and thank you for your support in the past and in the future. I remain available for comments, questions, and assistance if the need arises. I also had a wonderful election day. I got to spend time with Mike Menhart in the back. I forget how wonderful of a guy he is. I had a chance to talk with Mr. Townsend, Lou Townsend. The two of those men would be fine servants of the public here. I appreciate my two four-year terms and hope to return again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. That's all the public comments I have on my list for this evening, so we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation. We have some people who are here in the audience, so may I ask your guidance, Josephine, what ordinance should we start with so we can get them out of here pretty quick?
That's nice.
Yeah, I don't know if that's good or bad.
It would be one fourteen?
All right.
Well, no, I thought Shane is confirming the.
It would be one fourteen.
One fourteen?
I'll say that would be me.
All right. Ordinance number one fourteen dash two thousand thirteen. I don't know who has that.
Well, that's me.
Rita.
I'd like to offer ordinance number, number one, one hundred and fourteen, two thousand thirteen for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
In ordinance, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Terrence Snyder to the position of full-time police officer effective November twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen.
And what's your pleasure?
I move, I move that we pass and post ordinance number one fourteen, two thousand thirteen according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moner?
Yes.
Ordinance number one fourteen, two thousand thirteen passes. Terry, I see you out there in the audience. Why don't you come down to the microphone, say hi to all of us?
Hi, I'm Terry Snyder. I bring with me my wife, Stephanie, here. I live in Lakewood, but not, not for long. Look forward to moving down here to Sommet County eventually. Bring with me, I'm almost done with my degree in law enforcement. I bring with me eight years of military experience and two combat tours as a combat engineer and infantry. So I look forward to getting to work and serving the people of Macedonia.
Thank you very much. We look forward to having you. Welcome to our family.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank, I'd also like to thank the council and the mayor. Thank you.
You betcha. Aaron's not here right now, so let's go back to our normal order, starting with ordinance number ninety-six dash two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number ninety-six, two thousand thirteen to be held at its second reading.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Second.
In ordinance, changing the pay grade of Assistant Building Commissioner from grade nine, excuse me, pay grade nine to pay grade eleven, and amending ordinance forty-seven, two thousand twelve.
And what's your pleasure?
We're holding it second.
We're holding it second, sorry. Ordinance number ninety-seven dash two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to hold ordinance number ninety-seven, two thousand thirteen at its second reading. Second.
In ordinance, amending ordinance forty-two, two thousand thirteen with regard to the pay grade for the position of full-time assist, administrative assistant of the Macedonia Service Department.
Moving on, ordinance number ninety-eight dash two thousand thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number ninety-eight, two thousand thirteen for its third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I thought we were holding it at two. No, they're voting for it.
This is for that clerk for.
Third reading, Josephine.
Third reading for the public records clerk that they already have.
In ordinance, establishing the part, establishing the part-time position of public records clerk within the city of Macedonia and establishing compensation therefor.
I move that we pass and post ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand thirteen according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Moner?
I'm not opposed to the thought of having the records clerk. I want to be clear that when we talked in the work session, I wanted to wait until January to have the budgetary talks before we added any types of positions, so at this time, it's no.
Ordinance number ninety-nine, two thousand thirteen fails. Ordinance number one-ten, two thousand thirteen.
No, that was ordinance ninety-eight.
Yeah, one.
Ninety-eight failed. All right. We're on ninety-nine now. Ordinance number ninety-nine, two thousand thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hold ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand thirteen at second reading. No need to reread it.
Ordinance number one-ten dash two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one-ten, two thousand thirteen for second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Third?
For second and third.
Second and third.
Second.
Second and third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
We did, Ms. Darrow, that was you, correct, for second?
Yes.
Thank you.
At first, I didn't hear him say second and third.
That's okay. I didn't hear either.
Yeah, I know.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the Macedonia Occupancy Program Grant Agreement with Fidelity National Title Group, Inc.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, if I can give a brief explanation, prior meeting, we talked about this. Generally, on a MOP agreement, we do one reading per meeting, and given the Thanksgiving holiday, we will be canceling our next meeting, so that's why I went two, three on this one. So I'd like to move that we pass and post ordinance number one-ten, two thousand thirteen according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
I'd like to ask why we jumped from ordinance ninety-nine to one-ten. Did we, is that a mistake, or we just changed the order?
Well, you did.
There were some ones were passed in there.
There were other things passed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes.
Just to go back last week, you, we passed all the way up to one-twelve.
Okay. My vote's yes as well.
Mr. Miller and Mr. Moner? Okay, thank you.
Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand thirteen.
This one says, we go from ninety-nine to.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
All right. Ordinance number one-ten, two thousand thirteen passes. We will be getting a new company in here, hopefully. Nothing's for sure until they're here. Nothing's for sure until they're here, but they will be moving into a building on Highland Road. Once again, that new bridge is going to help us with economic development. Ordinance number 113-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 113-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance confirming the permanent promotion of Aaron Cullen to the position of police sergeant, having successfully completed the required probationary period pursuant to Article 8, excuse me, 7, Section 804 of the city's charter.
And what's your pleasure?
I move you pass and post ordinance 113-2013 according to law, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 113-2013 passes. Aaron's not here, he was here earlier, so, great man, great sergeant, right, John? John's not here, okay. Ordinance number 114-2013.
We did just say we ordered the officers later.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to ordinance number 115-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 115 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Regina Glenn to the position of full-time corrections officer.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 115.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 115-2013 passes. I'll tell you, if you ever want to meet Regina, she's one of the sweetest, nicest ladies you'd ever want to know, and a very hard worker. Ordinance number 116-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 116-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract modification with the Ohio Department of Transportation relating to the right-of-way acquisition services necessary for the project identified as, identified as PID 81656 with the county route section otherwise known as Summit State Route with 4.65 miles.
And what's your pleasure?
Move we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 116-2013.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 116-2013 passes. This is the right-of-way acquisition for Route 82 Phase 3. So we're moving forward to have Route 82 completely done from one end to the other, probably by the end of 2015. Ordinance number 117-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 117-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase contract with Liberty Ford of Solon for the purchase of two Ford F-250 trucks for use by the City of Macedonia Service Department and re-appropriating funds for that purpose.
And what's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 117-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes, but I think for the, for the people in the audience, we need to explain that what we're doing is, we had originally appropriated $60,000 for a Dura Patcher, but Dura Patches are now available without charge from Summit County and the Steve Hudson because of some agreements that we've entered into to share equipment, and so instead of buying a Dura Patcher, we're now going to replace two trucks. So this is, we're not expending money that was not already in the budget, we're just re-appropriating it. So yes.
You threw me there. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
All right, resolution number 117-2013 passes. Moving on to resolution number 118-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 118-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorize the mayor to apply for federal funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMET, in order to undertake various improvement projects in the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post resolution 118-2013 according to law.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Resolution number 118-2013 passes. If you start totaling up federal funding, it's approaching over $40 million already, what we have received, what we have turned into projects, and we are going for still more to continue addressing our infrastructure. Resolution number 119-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution 119-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorizing the advance of local taxes by the Summit County Fiscal Office to the city of Macedonia for 2013 tax year payable in 2014.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post resolution 119-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Resolution number 119-2013 passes. Scott, quick 20 second.
Yes, sir, just a resolution authorizing the county to disperse funds ahead of their normal April and August settlement. That's it.
All right, resolution number 120-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution 120-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only amended with removing the illegal structure.
You mean just removing illegal, not illegal structure?
Correct, thank you.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution waiving the required Board of Zoning and Building Code appeals for the Havlicek Structure located at 9129 Valley View Road.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution number 120-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Resolution number 120-2013 passes. Resolution number 121-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution 121-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution supporting the preservation of customer choice through governmental opt-out electric aggregation.
Very good.
That was already in slope.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post resolution 121-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
All right, are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the regular counseling of Thursday, November 28th and observance of Thanksgiving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that in addition for those residents who receive the discounted snow plowing and trash pickup, that we also waive for them the $20 water maintenance fee for those senior citizens that are affected by those programs who meet the income guidelines for 2014.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Scott?
I mean, we don't know the impact of that, it'd probably be minimal, though.
It'd be minimal.
How many, how many people are involved?
Jim, do you know how many people currently on this?
Close to around 99.
So say 100 times 25?
20.
Times 20?
28, I think.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Hearing none, let's move on to correspondents from the clerk.
I have just one. Dear Jim, this is District Service Director Jim Digtano. Just wanted to drop you a line and say thank you for your help in relighting Roland Hole Parkway. It's through the efforts and dedication of people like you and your crew that make Macedonia a safe and great place to live and work. From Walter Renke.
Very good. Any more?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to the mayor's report. I am just hoping everybody has a very happy Thanksgiving. I know I'll be very thankful for my health and my family, but looking back on 2013, there's a lot that I should be thankful for regarding our city. We finished the Highland Road Bridge. We finished and put sidewalks to the high school on South Bedford. Our seniors are finally getting some attention from the city with the senior citizen program that's growing by the week. We are all bursting with pride over the outstanding band and athletic prowess of our high school students on many different fronts. All in all, I think we can be thankful for living in Macedonia in 2013. Next year's looking good, too. This Thanksgiving, I will be very thankful for a conference call held in my office with ODOT and members of my staff today. They are giving us the opportunity to deal with a much-needed safety concern. During this call, I was told that ODOT is going to build us a new ramp for 271 North off of South Freeway Drive.
Congratulations.
The only cost to the city will be to purchase the right-of-way, probably $300,000 plus or minus. That's and maybe because remember, right now, this happened as of today. The official press release will be coming out from ODOT as soon as they get to it, but $300,000 is reachable. We will pay nothing for engineering, nothing for the road, and we will have an answer to a problem that's plagued us for years. The ramp will be completed by the fall of 2014. This is a very time-sensitive gift in that this must have approving legislation by our next council meeting, which will be the second Thursday in December. This project is still in its infancy, and of course, ODOT is going to be sending us all the information, all the details. The barricades will remain up, and I'm asking drivers to refrain from using Speedway to turn around. It's a lot safer for you to take the south ramp off Route 8. Perhaps you can use South Bedford so that you can make a right onto the ramp. Please, work with us, so that next year, at this time, you and all of us will be using our new ramp on South Freeway. The ramping on South Freeway will be the medicine we need to heal a sore spot and possibly a fatal spot for someone. This problem has plagued our city for a very long time. This is almost an unheard-of cooperated effort between federal government, state government, and local government to right a wrong. I think if we can thank the Lord for a touchdown, we absolutely can thank the Lord for the resolution that was achieved on this conference call today. The total revenue from our courts for October was $37,594. All of us from the city of Macedonia wish all of you a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And that's the end of my report. Moving on to committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the planning committee on November 11, 2013, planning meeting was held at 5:15 for a public hearing regarding an oversized garage addition located at 8890 North Bedford Road. Planning meeting began directly after that at 5:30. And also, we had a proposed sign at Triton Marine located 826 East Aurora Road, which is located at the Center Point Plaza. Next planning meeting will be held at 5:30 November 25, 2013. Also, on November 4, 2013, was a public hearing at 5:15 in which, which I was not in attendance. I ask that you refer any questions you may have to the mayor or the building department. The hearing was regarding Telsa Motors regarding a proposal, proposed electric vehicle charging stations located at 8210 Macedonia Commons Boulevard. That is all I have for you at this time, and thank you, and have a nice Thanksgiving.
For the Triton Marine, for your information, I had no clue what was there, but I did find out that they sell aquarium, tropical fish, that kind of thing, so they're right over there in the Center Point Plaza. Are there any other committee reports this evening? Hearing none, let's go on to department reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just for everybody's information, November 15 or the 16th expects some delays at Golden Lake. I'm going to have it restrikt. So you might have a little problem getting in and out, but it only should be a day or two. We had our first snow event this week on the 11th through the 12th. That went pretty good. We had about five trucks out, a little bit of salting, we had no problems. Leaf pickup is ongoing, and we're moving along. I would like to remind everybody again, please, rake off, don't wait till the last minute because it just causes problems. And do not put branches in the leaf piles. I've known as driving around that some people are doing this. What happens is, is it slows us down. And sometimes if they don't see it, it gets sucked into the tube, gets blocked. We have to stop what we're doing, we have to go back to the garage, we have to take the tube off, we have to unplug it. So please, don't put branches in the leaves. It causes too many problems. And also, try not to put them in the street either. I'm asking that because if it does snow, then they get covered, my salt trucks come along, they're going to put them leaves right back where they came from. So try not to do that. And also, on streets with curves, the leaves get wet, or they get, or if it rains, they'll float down the gutter, and they end up in our, in our catch basins, and they and they end up in our, in our catch basins, and they cover the grates, and then we'll have other issues like flooding and ice buildup, so try not to do that. Uh, we're, we're moving along, and we'll get to you as soon as possible. North Bedford Phase Two is complete. Uh, we had, as everybody knows, some major problems with utilities, water lines, gas lines, cable. Well, the chief isn't here, we spent a lot of time ripping up his cable. But, um, uh, it was, it was completed, and, uh, we'll start Phase Three in the spring of two thousand fourteen, as soon as weather permits, and at that time, we'll finish all landscaping and any driveways that need repair. And just so everyone knows, Phase Two, we did quite a bit of work there. We had to, uh, actually fabricate quite a bit of the, uh, work ourselves. And there was almost, uh, five hundred and eighteen feet of pipe weight, so, uh, it's, uh, was a pretty good project. And, and again, in two thousand fourteen, uh, in the spring, we'll complete it. That should alleviate a lot of flooding problems on North Bedford Road. Okay? And finally, uh, we did, uh, finish the spot repairs on Valley View Road. There's only one more section that they're gonna do, and hopefully, uh, next year, uh, we get additional funding. Through the help of, uh, Scott, I was able to get some funding to do some, quite a few, uh, spot repairs, uh, around town. Uh, I just want people to understand that we know every area that needs repairs, and we're trying to do a little bit at a time, and we will get to them. So, please don't call my office and yell at my girls, uh, they're not responsible for that. And, uh, we will get to you, and, uh, that's all I have to say, Mayor, under my report.
Very good. Mike?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. I want to say thanks again to the mayor, law, police, URS consultants, and along with GPD, all, all helped to contribute with ODOT to get this ramp done. It was a lot, a lot of work. Uh, we tried this for years, Mayor, and, uh, he finally succeeded. He was very adamant on it, so we, uh, it was a big accomplishment. Uh, working on the street inventory right now, uh, the engineering and service are working together on that. We're coming up with some creative ideas, uh, so that we, uh, make wise use of the money for next year. And then, uh, since NERSD is now, not gonna be doing stormwater projects next year, we're looking at what we can do in-house. As Jim explained, he did the North Bedford project, it came out excellent, his guys did a great job, so we're gonna be looking at more, more stuff in-house. That concludes my report.
Good job.
Thank you.
Angela?
Thank you, uh, just a reminder that we have the Nerdonia Winter Craft Show taking place this Saturday, uh, November sixteenth, from nine AM to three PM. This will take place at Eaton, uh, I'm sorry, Lee Eaton Elementary School. It's being held in their gymnasium, so there's free admission, we have about forty vendors. Uh, we actually ran out of, of space, or we would've had more, we have a lengthy, uh, waiting list, so we will probably try and seek a larger venue next year. But again, that is this Saturday, November sixteenth, so we hope to see you there. Uh, we have a lot of holiday events coming up. Our Letters to Santa begins on December first, and that runs through the seventeenth. We have a mailbox, uh, for the North Pole set up in the rec center lobby. Kids can drop their letters off, and they will receive a response from Santa. Our winter holiday camp is December twenty-third through January third. Um, this is during the children's school winter break around the holidays. So, if you need something to enroll your children in because they're home and you're not, or they're just looking for activities, um, we do have our holiday winter camp at the rec center for children six, six to twelve. Uh, we have a spaghetti dinner with Santa planned this year on Saturday, December seventh. This is by reservation only, um, just because it is a catered event. This will begin at five thirty PM that evening. Adults are eight dollars, children under twelve are four. Santa will arrive by fire truck that evening, and we'll have face painting and crafts and activities for the kids to do as well at that event. Uh, the recreation center is closed only on Thursday, November twenty-eighth in observance of Thanksgiving. Uh, we're open the day after, and we wish everybody a very nice and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, good job, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to report finally, we've got the insurance claims paid out on the rec center, all the work's been done. Jim DiGutano oversaw this whole project, and as you know, that, uh, the rec center roof had some more damage not directly attributed to the storm, so there were some complications and mitigations involved with the, uh, insurance claims. But, uh, all in all, we, when we got into it, we didn't know what our end would be in council appropriated thirty thousand dollars in case of, uh, worst-case scenario. So, the total bills came in for everything, and that's not only the rec center, but the salt shed and, uh, utility building on Valley View. It came in at a hundred and thirteen thousand six sixty-five eighty-nine. Our insurance paid ninety-four thousand eight fifty-two, so it left a balance, which was coming out of the rec center fund because most of the claim was attributed to the rec center, the extra money of eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, so short of the thirty thousand worst-case scenario that we had thought. But, uh, Jim worked closely with Dunright, and, uh, they're a reputable, uh, contractor. So, you know, even though it's a disaster as far as, uh, what happened to us, that aging roof, maybe it's a blessing that we finally did get it, uh, fixed, because we'll be looking at... When, when the contractor came out of the insurance claims, they looked at this building as well. They said that the, the age of this building and the shingle that was used, uh, you could start looking in the next two to three years to start total replacing this roof, so that's gonna be costly. Uh, we did apply for a Home Depot grant for a small amount, two thousand dollars, that was offered for a senior center for kitchen cabinets that Sherry said that would be a, a nice item to have down there. Uh, I called ODNR today to find out about our Nature Works program grant that we had forty thousand dollar grant for our, um, uh, playground equipment. And, uh, that, uh, announcement will be sometime next week, they expect. They really thought it was gonna be at the end of October, they've held that off, and, um, so, she's, uh, she couldn't give me an official, um, response to it, but she said that, uh, she was happy with our grant application, and, um, we're, we're confident as far as this point. Uh, there are some grants that we're looking into for February, Federal Land Water Conservation Grant and the Clean Trails Fund, and, um, that can be used for trailer improvements or even pavilions and upgrades to restrooms, so we'll be looking at, uh, working at, uh, trying to get that done. Uh, just a quick report for Rita. Our October, uh, income tax collections are up nine point three nine percent as far as, uh, October from comparison from this year and last year. And overall, for the year, from, uh, we're up eleven point nine percent. So, uh, that's been, uh, a good... One of the things I attended today was, uh, the mayor's, uh, Northeast Ohio Mayor's, um, Association Meeting. The mayor couldn't make it, so I was in his place, and they asked for finance directors or anyone else concerned with, uh, the HB five bill, which was voted, voted on the other day. It's gotta go to the Senate, and one of the things that, uh, that most cities are fearful for is the, uh, operating net loss carryover. Right now, our, most cities in Rita, the Regional Income Tax Association, have a five-year, and the current bill as it's written, they want to go back as much as ten to fifteen, so through the Senate, they're hoping it's gonna get watered down further and, uh, not impact us as much. And, um, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Tim?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, the Santa gift delivery, uh, the last day to drop off gifts is December fourteenth. The gifts will be delivered by Santa on December sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. Uh, I thank everybody for attending our Pancake Day, which was Sunday, we served just under five hundred people. I'd like to thank, uh, Kim Greiner and Sylvia and Dennis Mulek for the donation of a TV for a fifty, for a raffle. Um, that certainly helped our income, and I would like to thank all veterans that are in the room, because Monday was Veterans' Day, so thank you for your service.
All right, good, Jackie? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something for Tim?
Well, no, I had a question for Scott. I received an email, I know, I seen something come by, um, the time clocks, could you give us an update on the time clocks?
Time clock was installed, uh, at the rec center, we're gonna get the other two, uh, or three clocks, uh, installed within the next week. They're in the other clocks, and, uh, we're working with him on the software and how it's gonna apply to us.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Jackie?
Sorry, Jackie.
Um, just a few things for engineering, um, we've reviewed plans for the Redwood Apartments, also known as Onclave Apartments on South Park Drive. Those comments have gone out, we're waiting on recent over that. And then also, uh, Gardens of Highland, um, we've also performed a review on that, and comments have been sent out, uh, last week they were sent, so we're waiting on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing, Mayor.
Joe, I want to thank you a lot for your help and guidance with, um, getting us that ramp. It, I don't know if we could've accomplished that without your help, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor, uh, all the applications for the two thousand fourteen naming contest for the New Fun Fest, I guess we'll call it, are in. I plan to have the next meeting, hopefully, the lucky child that won here to present, uh, the two hundred dollar gift card. I'd like to thank Council for contributing to that, those of you that have. Also like to thank the mayor and his secretary, Dan Angelo, for helping collect these. Got, uh, some pretty good ones in there that I'm pretty fond of, but I'm gonna allow everyone else to vote on that. And even greater than all that, I'd also like to thank the veterans, because without them, I don't know what we would do.
All right, any other unfinished business?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?